That's right. So do we need to wait for Ron? I don't see him.
Ron's headed back to his office, so he'll be on shortly.
Okay. Well, maybe we could...
Allison, you would...
I'm sorry? Who's speaking? Okay, okay. Kathy? What were you saying?
I was just gonna say Allison would know whether or not Ron would be needed.
Thank you. Allison?
It's really up to you. I think...
...the end of March to work through some criteria for new economic development tools. Although at the time, we were really discussing criteria for commercial properties. And we want to kind of switch the conversation at this point to talk about residential properties, because that's been identified as a goal for both the agency and city council for expanding residential properties. So a list of economic development tools that has been identified to address residential development aimed at workforce or middle missing housing, which is the 60% to 120% of the median family income. So that list is in the agenda here. So one option that we'll talk about tonight is to expand the facade improvement loan program to include residential property loans for homes that meet that missing middle or workforce criteria. And the second option we'll also talk about tonight would be to do the same and expand the energy efficiency loan program to include residential properties that meet that missing middle or workforce criteria. Another option to address the residential properties would be to offer a mixed-use housing loan. So the idea behind this program would be to provide loans for second-story residential remodel construction of existing commercial buildings or for a percentage of the cost for second-story construction of a new building. So this funding could be used for upgrades such as elevators, private access, or other construction needed to convert that second story to create more residential properties. Another option would be to offer a workforce or missing middle housing loan. So the idea behind this program would be to provide loans for residential construction meeting that local workforce market. Again, this is defined as those earning 60% to 120% of the median family income. So the way that this program has been talked about in the past, as it was adopted for the agency, was that it could be used in conjunction with the other tools, such as pre-development assistance or infrastructure partners. Although this particular program for the missing middle housing loans hasn't... the criteria hasn't been defined. So you may or may not decide that you would want that to be used with another tool. Two other tools that could address the residential properties would be the pre-development assistance tool, which has been... the criteria was approved by the agency. So this would be for system development charges and permit fees to be prepaid by the agency. And we haven't talked about whether or not that could be used for residential properties. So that's something that we would like to have a conversation about. And then similar for the infrastructure partners tool. This was for private redevelopment projects that would support the efforts of the agency. Again, this could be used for residential properties. And then the last option we wanted to point out would be a brownfield assistance tool. And this is something we're working on now. We are conducting an underutilized property survey. Although this is a citywide survey. So this isn't particular to the agency. But if residential property is within the urban renewal district, then the agency... we're hoping to identify those properties and connect with the property owners to understand what their needs may be to bring that property either to sale or redevelopment. So we're looking for that tool in the future. So... So those are seven different tools, part of the toolbox that's been approved that would address residential needs. And at this point, staff would like discussion, like I said, on the updated program criteria to include improvements for residential properties for the facade improvement loan program, as well as the energy efficiency loan program. So what staff has proposed at this point for criteria for residential properties to be included, would that be the residence... it needs to be a... provide primary residence for the property owner. Another criteria we're proposing is homes with a market value at or below $252,000. And this is from the housing needs assessment. And as the COGS suggested, we would recommend a 25% equity requirement for property owners. And lastly, we would recommend that the residential property is less than 1,012... 1,200 square feet. So what we've included in the packet to kind of make it easier for you to review is use the track changes for the existing tools to point out the differences if you did want to bring this criteria into the new program to allow these tools to be used for residential properties. So at this point, I would like a discussion. And if you have any concerns with the criteria we proposed and how you would want this to be changed or not changed.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question. Which is the criteria being less than 1,200 square feet? Why is that? Why did you choose that number?
Yeah, that's a great question. Actually, Allison, I think can elaborate on that more, because that number was her suggestion.
Sure. We did 1,200 square feet because that is the square footage size that we decided to use for the new construction of the Lincoln Community Land Trust home that we did. I think that was 2012. And we had a lot of discussion being on the land trust board, which of course now is dissolved and is basically proud ground, about what the size is of a home that's workforce, recognizing that there are families of all different sizes and makeups that need more or less bedrooms. That 1,200 square feet is what could be a three-bedroom, two-bath home. Probably wouldn't want to go smaller than that for a three-bedroom, two-bath. And you know, anything less than that, of course, a one-bedroom home or whatever. If you wanted to make it a little more flexible, you could say approximately 1,200 square feet. And then as applications came in, we could... if they met all the program criteria, except they were maybe 1,400 square feet, we would just still bring that to you. And you all could decide if that home were too large to really fit that definition or intention of workforce housing or not.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, comments, deep thoughts?
My hand up.
There's a deep thinker. Mr. Mark.
He stays awake. So this is an urban renewal agency program. I mean, the urban renewal district along 101 is ending. So where would these residences be? Is this only in the new urban renewal districts that we're creating? And before you answer that, I'm wondering about if we establish dollar value criteria on the market value of the house or the... There's another one now. I lost it. Do those numbers grow with inflation over time? What was the other dollar? There's another dollar behind there. Yeah, in other words, today in 2020, it might be 252,000. But what would it be in 2025?
Sure. So we are only talking about the year 2000 development plan area. That's the only area that you all have a loan program, an economic development toolbox for. If you want in the future, if there are future areas that come under your jurisdiction or management, then you can make decisions at that time about if you want to allocate any of that maximum indebtedness to go towards toolbox or loan programs or not. So you're right. We are just talking about the year 2000 development plan area. We are... You know, the loan program is in existence until we pay off the final bond, which I believe is slated for, I think, this fall, late fall. So it will happen in this next fiscal year. What will happen to the loan funds at that time? Staff will be bringing options to you on what to do. Basically, the loan fund is an asset of the urban renewal agency. And you can decide how to use those funds. So what we're doing is creating the program, whether it has funding or not. What will happen when the urban renewal area boundary, the year 2000 development plan boundary goes away? Does that mean that anyone can apply for these funds? Or are we still going to kind of have a phantom boundary that where the area is? Yeah, those are all things yet to discuss. So what houses exist? Well, all of Cutler City is in the urban renewal area. Parts of Taft have homes and are also in the urban renewal area. And there are some homes that are on Highway 101 that are residential use that may be interested in this sort of a program. So we do have residences located, even though we have always been mostly about commercial. When we started the facade improvement loan program, some of you may remember that was in 2000 or '99, when we did the Taft community vision. And we created the facade improvement program. And we didn't say it had to be for commercial or residential. We just said, you know, for whomever wants to apply to improve their facade. We did have some residential loan applications that were awarded or issued. And I think there were about three of them. Their loan paid off, but they went for second homes. Additions and square footage to second homes and some other things that I'm sure improved the facade. Otherwise, the agency wouldn't have approved that loan. But didn't have other criteria about making sure that those residences were really targeting our workforce needs. Of course, 20 years ago, we had a different housing situation than we do today. Since the residential portion of the facade improvement program in the year 2000 or 2001, 2002, through those early years, was found really to be assisting those who maybe just saw the value in 0% interest loans, but didn't really need it. They could probably get a conventional loan at their bank. But they saw, oh, 0% interest, and I'd like to make some improvements, but I don't have to make some improvements. And they were successful in getting those program funds out. And they did make improvements. But this is a more targeted approach to making sure that when it does come to a residential application, that we are doing everything we can to set it up to be an improvement to a home that is housing somebody in our workforce. I think you had a second question in there, and I'm sorry I didn't...
I noticed the two... homes with market value below 252,000. Well, that may be... But the prices showed up so much. Is that adjusted over time?
Yeah, the 252 is really based on the housing needs assessment, which identified that that was the upper limit of what someone at 120% of median family income could afford. Now, our housing needs assessment is already... Oh, was it 2017 or 19? I don't remember. 17? That feels like it went really fast. So it's already a couple of years old. And that data was based on the American Community Survey data from 2014 to 18. And of course, now we're in a census. So we have a good opportunity of learning more information in the next couple of years. But for now, we're using that couple of years old data. 252, you know, again, we could say around 252,000, if you're more comfortable with that. Or we could just have, and every couple of years, we reevaluate what someone at 120% of median family income could really afford.
It sounds like... I'm sorry. It sounds like you could just say that you're applying the formula to the median income. And so whatever the median... As the median income grows, that market value will grow also?
We could do that, although depending on family size. If you have... You know, the HUD guidelines range from a household of one to a household of eight. I'm sure there are some cases that are greater than eight. But the $252,000 is based on a household of four median family income. 30% of their income goes to housing. So they're not housing burdened. So, you know, that number would change if we made it based on family size and all of that. I mean, we could just attach the most current graph that... Or we could just say the HUD guidelines for Lincoln County. We could make something more general if you're concerned about that price changing.
I think we could accomplish it by saying about. And then when we do get some new real numbers, then maybe we can look at it again. So you could put it, you know, a little... Put it in your tickler file in a couple of years and look at it again. I don't want to make it more complicated. I don't want you to have to go through all of those tables and numbers and family sizes. But we do want to make sure that it's available to the right folks to get... to make their improvements. Now, to be respectful of our time, we have about five minutes. Does any... Before the mayor takes over. So do we have any other discussion or questions for this? Do we have any idea? Oh, go ahead. Mr. Anderson.
It seems like a short time to discuss this stuff. But I'm curious about an applicant comes in and we're targeting using a market price as kind of the catch-all and primary residence. So I buy fixer-upper house, and it's well below $1250,000. And I come and ask for a $75,000 loan. The things I'm going to do, you know, take the property up to $300,000 or $350,000. And of course, I'm still living in it, and I'm over 120% median income. I guess I don't see what the control guides are to keep the workforce housing workforce housing and the targeted borrower? So I'm a little confused in what the parameters are to kind of keep that inventory starting out and the use of your loan staying in.
Sure. So with rental housing, as you know, people's income can increase over time. And that doesn't necessarily bump them out of that unit. In this case, if someone were to come in and take a loan for $150,000, and the home were valued at 250,000, and by the time they were done with their improvements, I don't know if all 150 would be captured directly in that value increase of the home or not. But let's say it did. And then it went to $400,000. That person could remain in that home. They're still paying on the loan over time. And then if they decided to sell it, then the next buyer who would come in applying for a loan would not qualify, because the value of that home would then be above that 252,000. So you're right. It would... I mean, without having a very challenging tracking system that is intensive with staff time, I don't know how else to do it, other than to have a fixed point in time for the value of that home.
But I guess my point, even my scenario, says I come to you with a plan to put 150... Your 150,000 into my house. So right from the get-go, you know this $250,000 house is going to go out of your targeted range. So maybe the catch ought to be, you know, even with improvements, at least after you've done your improvements, it's not going to be over X something in value. If you don't go to income level, you know, which you're not, and you go into the property, then don't you want to keep it in that price range? If they hit a home run, great. But knowing that they're making the improvements, that on your money, free interest, they could have gone to a bank.
Sure. That's a policy decision. We're happy to change criteria based on that. We could do 252,000 minus the loan request or something.
Well, I like to say that I just don't want to cut it off right here. That seems like a big question that we ought to be thinking about. Maybe you could bring us back some other thoughts about that? I don't feel ready to move forward until we kind of sort out those...
Chair Hitten?
Yes.
I wonder if there's a way, since we know we're going to have this discussion with different hats later on this evening, I wonder if there's a way to cross-fertilize urban renewal?
Hey, didn't I have that suggestion to you about a couple of days ago? I'm all for it, because I asked if we could do it before, if we could somehow have a joint session, discussion at the same time.
So Richard, is there a way that the urban renewal agency could pass a motion where they would defer to city council? Or they would match the motion of city council? Or is that too great?
Well, you don't really want to give away your ability to make a decision. But I don't see any harm in a motion that says you'll match what the city council does, subject to, you know, calling it back at a future meeting. It's not going to be implemented in two... So I think if you said you'll match to the council and subject to review at a future meeting. The other option is you adjourn this... You don't adjourn this meeting. You recess this meeting, and then you call it back sometime after the city council's discussed. We didn't notice that, so I, you know...
I gave us time. I had the idea.
Or we could start over in two weeks, or four weeks, I guess, and just allow for more time.
Yeah. There's no... Given what we're also dealing with, I think you could take the additional time.
Okay. We don't want to burst Jody's bubble, but I think we gave you a couple more things to work on. Okay?
Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay. Mayor, what do you think about that?
Well, I think that's fine. I would hope, though, that there'd be a way that the economic development staff could share with urban renewal staff the notes from the council meeting. And they could bring back to urban renewal a redone criteria based on what they heard in other environments.
I think that's a great idea.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Go right ahead. Say it again.
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, for Kathy's sake. For Kathy's sake.
Aren't they innocents? Aren't we saying the same thing? I'd make a motion for staff to use whatever means to take what we've talked about in this council or this agency meeting and other agency meetings where councils, where this topic is being discussed, and come back a refined draft for agency approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Mitch. Is that right?
It was.
Okay. Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay, we're going to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay. I guess we have a motion that has passed. And we will continue this discussion in a month. But before that, we will also hear again in the council meeting, which begins any minute now. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.
We stay here? Don't log off?
David, do you know how many people are in there that wanted to testify? Okay.